Good evening, everyone. We'll get started in just a couple of minutes. Just thank you to the public.
Commissioner, we have translations, so should we do that?
Yes, you're reading my mind, Deborah. Yes.
Okay, can you announce translation, please?
Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Good afternoon. SFUSD is offering interpretation services in Spanish and Cantonese. If any interpretation, please dial the following phone number. After dialing, please introduce the pin number. This message will be repeated in Spanish and Cantonese. Buenas tardes. El Distrito Escolar Unificado de San Francisco ofrece servicios de interpretación en el idioma español. Si necesita interpretación por medio de Google Meet, por favor, marque el siguiente número telefónico seguido de la clave de acceso. Uno, tres uno nueve, tres ocho dos, nueve seis siete seis. Por favor, introduzca la clave. Seis seis cinco, nueve nueve seis, nueve siete seis, seguido de la tecla numeral. Gracias. Cantonese interpreter, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much to our translation interpreters. So at this time, I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole for an update on safety and learning for Tuesday, January 18th. And just again, under general information, we've noticed a virtual meeting at ADA Accommodation and Translation Services. And we have one informational item tonight. I'd like to call in Dr. Matthews to introduce the item.
Thank you, Vice President Lam. Good evening, everyone. Great to see you. Before I start, I'm looking through the names and I, we have a deck and I'm not sure who's driving, so wanted to make sure. Jill, do you know who's driving?
Ms. Lenoff is going to put it up, but I can do it if she is not.
No, I can do it.
Oh, thank you. I just wasn't sure. Good evening, Ms. Lenoff.
Hi.
Thank you so much. So good evening, once again, everyone. Appreciate you being here this evening. The one item this evening is, once again, a update on safety and learning. So many of you know we are in the middle of a surge and so we wanted to make sure we are keeping the community as well as our board and staff members up to date on progress regarding safety and learning for the San Francisco Unified School District. Next slide. So tonight, what we will be discussing is, are these five areas. What the COVID cases look like in the city, what the surge looks like. We'll also be talking about supply distribution, both around masks as well as tests and the supply that keeps us safe. We'll be talking about how we're responding to this surge with staffing and making sure that we have staff members or enough staff members at sites to make sure teaching and learning is continuing. We'll also update the public on and the community and our board on student attendance. And then the final part of this presentation will be response to the letter received from our SAC. So these are the five areas we'll be covering this evening. And we will begin this evening with Chief Laus Smith.
As a student, I write long essays that I work on.
You want to make sure you're muted if you are on a panelist or you need to make sure you mute your microphone? Once again, we will begin with Chief Laus Smith and she will be giving us an update on the response from the city and what the surge currently looks like in the city.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. I think go to the next slide, please. Good evening, Commissioner. So the data that I'm sharing tonight is directly from the city's COVID case dashboard that provides information. The information is updated daily and you can see that there's generally a one-week lag between the data that's reported and the date that we are in. So you could see in the first week of January, which is actually from December 28th, there were 941 new cases per day. And then you can see as of Friday, January 14th, which is actually January 6th, that number has reached 1,630 new cases per day. The hospitalizations have also increased and we are at an 81% vaccinated for all ages in San Francisco. I haven't, early information, early information we're hearing from SFDPH and California Department of Public Health is that the increase of cases is beginning to slow. So we may be reaching our peak and start, starting, hopefully starting to see a slow, slowdown in new cases. Can I have the next slide, please? This is also another information that you can get from the website is you can also look at the daily cases. And again, you can see on January 7th, 8th, and 9th, that information is less reliable because it's as the data comes in. So the January 6th date data is more reliable. So there is a lot of data you can look at on a daily basis, but there generally is a five-day lag time. So that is the information on the new cases in San Francisco for the past month about. And I think I'm turning it over to talk about supply distribution. So you can go to the next slide.
Good evening, commissioners. Here to just describe a little bit of our efforts over the past few weeks to distribute to SFUSD school sites and administrative sites KN95 and 95 masks as well as rapid home self. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry, Dawn, I think I messed you up because.
Oh, yeah. You're still going.
Talk about this if you like, but that's my fault. Sorry.
Thank you.
So as part of the supply distribution, just wanted to share with you the information we shared last week about the different testing that is available through SFUSD, mostly focusing on the home rapid tests that were distributed the week of January 10th. And that was the one-time distribution that we received through the California Department of Public Health, that allocation. So those test, home test kits have largely been distributed. And then the next slide is mine. So just another way of saying the same thing, the home rapid test. We had 57,000, the home tests that you do yourself at home for K through 12 students and that has been completed. Those were for the charter schools and the charter school distribution is actually happening today. We are also looking, have ordered a supply for pre-K and TK because as you see, the California Department of Health's allocation did not include those students. So we are, we hopefully are getting a shipment, I think maybe today or tomorrow that we will be passing out. We were fortunate to get a business and community donation of 4,000 rapid test kits and those have been distributed to school sites for staff. And we also received 1,500 rapid test kits from San Francisco Department of Public Health, which we distributed at our rapid antigen test sites as well as to school sites and staff. And then the 2,000 rapid test kit that we've ordered is what I referenced in that first, that first row when I talked about the need to get TK and pre-K students the test because they were not included in the California Department of Health allocation. So now, I believe.
I just wanted to make one correction, so I just want to make sure we're completely correct. So the, the, the tests that were the donation from the, the business community were for teachers, instructional teachers, not staff. So we don't have them for all staff yet. We hope to get to that place. But those, the, the donation from, from the business community went to the instructional teachers at sites.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews. And now Chief Kamaloff, then we'll talk about the mask distribution.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So we have at the warehouse been working pretty nonstop over the past few weeks to, in addition, distributing home test kits to school sites, also mask distribution. And we have received significant donations over the past just week and a half. And in particular, we have also distributed really an astonishing number of both KN95 as well as surgical and cloth masks out to sites since January 14th. And these numbers have even increased since my last report of last week. Our preparation is we are working towards a standard that assumes daily use of masks at sites. So trying to ensure that, again, we are building our procurement strategy to ensure that all SFUSD staff will have access to high-quality masks on a daily basis. We are current, continue to use our warehouse as our main form of distribution and are utilizing a combination of our own staff, volunteers, as well as, you know, moving companies that we've worked with over the past year to prepare for in-person learning. In the coming week, we are also exploring some specific distribution strategies for subsets of staff that would allow for pickup locations because in some cases that might be faster. But I think overwhelmingly, the, the, the main distribution is going to continue to be trucks leaving the warehouse and going to school sites on a regular schedule. I think, I think that's, with that, I think I'm turning it over to Chief Bisher. Next. Next slide.
All right. Good evening, colleagues and community. I'm here with the staffing overview for the last couple of weeks. I think you know that we're in a surge and of course Omicron is affecting everybody who works for SFUSD, including our teachers, our substitutes, our parent educators, our administrators. And I really want to say that I think it's been incredibly impressive to see San Francisco Unified practice the core value of being united in staffing our schools and keeping all of our schools open. You can see the, the data here. This is the number of teacher vacancies by day last week and then I included today. You can see that we finally dipped to our lowest point in teacher absences today over the last week and a day. You can also see there on the right, the percentage of those absences that were covered by substitutes. Again, you can see today we had our highest percentage covered, percent of coverage. So that's exciting. I used to have a column on here and it went, went, but we've also been deploying, you can see there on the right, 70 to 100 certificated and classified central staff each day. And there's a, we have a whole system in place for that so that we're sharing that responsibility fairly between and among employees. You can see that our substitute system has, we've got, you know, 776 subs in our system, but only 150 to 200 of them are deploying every day to classrooms. So one of our, we got a number of strategies to try to increase the, the rate of coverage while Omicron is, you know, affecting staffing, one of which is going to be to, to do some continued outreach to the people in our existing pool to see if we can get them to come and take jobs in our system. Speaking of substitutes, on the next slide, have a lot of outreach going on to increase our substitute pool and activate people to, to take jobs. Got a lot of media recruitment going on, recruitment through media, both traditional TV, radio interviews and social media postings. We have somebody in place right now who's providing coaching and consultation for, for support in the application process. It's actually, it's a little bit of a process to become a substitute. You know, there's some checks and balances in place to make sure that we comply with, with all the regulations of who's in front of, who's staffing our classrooms. So we've got some support right now in place for anybody who's interested in becoming a substitute to help them get through the process. And we're actually in the process of expanding our subrecruitment to include candidates who don't have a BA or a bachelor's degree. This is a new, a new credential area that works, that we're, that we're testing out so that it's possible, for example, that a colleague who works in an after-school program or who is a parent educator or who is a parent or a community member who doesn't hold that degree to still be able to qualify and be hired as a substitute. So lots of creative outside-of-the-box thinking going on about how to, how to address some of our current staffing issues, but wanted to provide you with those two updates. And I think it's time to pass it on to Chief Kana.
Thank you so much, Kristin. Good evening, commissioners, colleagues, and members of the public. I want to take this opportunity definitely, as Kristin said, to thank our community for the incredible resilience shown over the last few weeks. And as I present this attendance data, majority of our students and staff are at school every day doing some vital work, instructional work, even in the midst of these unprecedented difficulties and uncertainties. Today, I want to provide you with an update on attendance patterns and trends for the first week of the spring semester, which began right after the winter breaks, the first week of this year. Before I go through the data, however, I would like to add the caveat that the reliability of this data has definitely been impacted by delays in data entry due to teacher absences and an overload of pandemic-related tasks on school office staff. We also typically do not present attendance data so soon after it has been collected. But these are extenuating circumstances and even if imperfect, the attendance data I'm about to present tells us a lot about how the Omicron variant is affecting our schools. Next slide, please. Thank you. On this slide displays trends across the first week of school for the spring semester. In other words, the first five school days after winter break for the district and for each school level. The attendance data year is the weekly average for the attendance rates taken on a daily basis. So it's taken on a daily basis as opposed to attendance for any given period, which is usually collected, collected in grades six to 12. So we do have that attendance as well. This slide compares attendance during the first week of the 2022 spring semester with the same week during the last two years in January 2021 during the pandemic when all schools were in distance learning. And a year before that, which is January 2020, first week before the pandemic, when we did have in-person learning. District-wide, you can see, looking at the first three charts, graphs, you can see that there was a significant drop in attendance as compared to the previous years. Following the first three bars on this chart, you'll see the attendance recorded for the first week in 2022 as 82.7% as compared to the previous two years when it was 94.4% in spring 2021 first week and 94.8% in spring 2021 first week. Preliminary data from the second week, which was last week, or the second week of January shows similar trends. We also continue to see that the lowest attendance rates recorded was among elementary-level students, 79.9% as seen on this chart as compared to middle and high school students, which is 85.8% and 85.1% respectively. All school-level trends are significantly lower than the early other years. The second week has shown a continued decline at every level at a greater rate of 5% less. In conclusion, the attendance rates are far lower than usual for this time of the year based on the first two weeks of the spring semester. Next slide, please. This slide shows some insights or patterns observed as we disaggregated the data. The first conclusion we saw was that the attendance rate was lowest among our TK students, 73.1% and highest among the sixth and ninth grade students, 86.4%. Just concentrating on elementary level, we also found that as the grade increased, the attendance increased. So the lowest, even though it was 73.1 for TK, as we went up in the grade, at fifth grade, it was 80.6%. Again, a small increase as we increased each grade level. Next data pattern was when you disaggregated it by all the different groups, programs, ethnicities. What we found is that two groups that had an attendance rate of 70% or lower were African-American students and Pacific Islanders.
Excuse me, Ritu, just to pause. Whoever's driving this slide, could we go back to the slide that, um, thank you. Thanks so much. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much for catching that. Among the Pacific Islander group, the lowest attendance was seen among Samoan students. The Samoan students had an attendance rate of 52.3%. The third data conclusion was that you saw, you can see student attendance rates by zip codes and the lowest attendance rates were concentrated in the Bayview Hunters Point area and Treasure Island zip codes. What we also saw was the map was very aligned with the number of cases by zip code. So it had a correlation with number of cases recorded by zip code. Next, in speaking with all the research directors of the large urban districts, both at the state level and nationally, there are similar rates and issues all around. Absence rates are around 20 to 25% during the first two weeks in most of these urban districts. Last, as stated earlier, preliminary attendance data in the second week shows an attendance rate drop to 77.6%. While a decline in attendance rate was seen for elementary, middle, and high school students from week one to week two, the largest drop was among students in the elementary grades. In other words, those with the lowest attendance rate during week one also experienced the steepest decline from week one to week two. Thank you. I will now pass it to Dr. Matthews to share the next few slides.
And these are the final few slides. This is in response, as you know, last week, we received a, some requests from our, our SAC and our student board members, student delegates. Next slide. So these are the areas that were in the letter. Communication, having a hybrid option, excuse, absences, virtual option, transparency around resource distribution, better enforcement strategies for safety protocols, required vaccinations, and then they were urging for time at the next board meeting, which was the last board meeting. President Lopez and I have the opportunity to meet with our student delegates. And just will quickly talk, these are what we discussed. Next slide. So we currently are already working with SFCSD and the communications offices on posters. So that's already in process. Posters are being designed that are going to better describe the health and safety protocols and those will be sent to all, definitely all middle and high schools. And communications is already working also on emails that will be sent to all students that will have this information and then also links to where you can find this information. You can see around the hybrid option, this is the information that we currently have. We already have options in regards to independent study, a long-term option and a short-term option. And then you can see we're continuing to evaluate independent study options. We currently had a discussion about this this morning and we're continuing to evaluate and try to find a short-term, more short-term options for independent studies for students who meet that criteria. Around excuse, absences, we already have excuse, absences for students who have COVID or are quarantining. I know this request was much more around students who didn't feel safe. And the parent or caregiver can call in an absence and can bring a note for when students return. And we're working with our, our legislators around increasing those options, especially now as this surge has happened. Virtual option is similar to the hybrid option above. Next slide. Transparency, transparency around resource distribution. Once again, we're making that, the resource distribution more transparent by making sure it's regularly on our website. Making sure it's in these board meeting presentations. It's definitely in my messaging and briefings that we've actually started a weekly briefing now for staff. So we're making that more available. But we also, in the website's updates, we want to make sure that when we are sending the emails to staff members and the posters, we want to make sure that the links to get this information is readily available to our students in those two ways. Better enforcement of strategies, we're including instructions around proper PPE use on those posters and in the communications directly to students. And required vaccinations, we had a, a, a pretty lengthy discussion around this. And because our vaccination rate is currently as high as it is, we are not moving towards required vaccinations at this time. And one of the things that we talked about is all of those districts that have those mandated vaccination dates have either at least. Uh, have either at least once, in some cases twice, have moved, uh, back the start of those required vaccination dates. Uh, and, um, or the final one is around the urging of the allotted time. Uh, we, uh, allotted time at our previous board meeting for discussion and. Currently, we put it on, uh, on up for discussion at this meeting. And with that, I am going to turn it back over to, uh, Vice President Lamb.
Thank you, Dr. Matthews, and to our staff for this presentation. I know that we had, uh, quite a lengthy conversation, discussion at just last week's board meeting. Um, maybe I will ask my colleagues, um, if there's any clarifying questions before I open it up. Uh, to the, um, public for public comment. And if I don't get to see all your hands, just give a shout out to. President Lopez?
Yeah, thank you. For the substitute information, do we have the number? Of the average daily, um, attendance for substitutes? And it could be before the pandemic to give us a better sense of on an average day, how many substitutes we had?
So can I clarify, you're asking like, not just percentage, but like the exact, like how many people are, how many substitutes are taking jobs?
Yes, so, and, and just in comparison to the numbers that you had, um, there, they were listed daily, so. The lowest recently was today, but on an average day, what's the regular number that you would see?
You mean pre-pandemic?
Even, I think pre-pandemic is helpful, just to give the public an idea of. A regular day, how many substitutes we would have, um, at our sites? Either.
I, I can give you a specific number. I mean, I can tell you that the percentage is significantly higher. Right? We're looking at more like seventy to eighty percent coverage of, of vacancies in a normal time. As opposed to where we are right now, which is anywhere between thirty and forty percent, thirty to thirty-five to fifty percent. So I can also. I, come back in just a few minutes with some specific numbers.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and vacancies is actually, I think, what I'm looking for.
Not substitutes, but number of vacancies.
Number of vacancies.
Okay.
Thank you.
And let me just, just to be clear, when you ask for vacancies, do you also mean? You just mean vacancies not covered by subs or because you know center office is also covering some of these? So do you just wanna know what's open or just what's not covered at all?
How about, I, I want him, I know, I, I might be asking this in the wrong way. The number of requests made for substitute coverage on an average day in SFUSD. Pre-pandemic, um, I, I wanna have an idea of what we're dealing with now in comparison to what an average day is. Matt, I, I see you nodding, so I feel like I'm connecting, um.
I, I understand what you're asking.
Thank you.
So Kristen, do you have the clarification that you need, um, to, to address President Lopez's question?
I think so, we'll see if it, when I come back with it, we'll see if that answers your question.
Sounds good, and, um, I'll call on Commissioner Collins, Alexander, and then student delegate Lamb in that.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to know if. I'm, I'm hearing that there's normally a lag in updating the COVID numbers. Um, but I'm remembering last week, we also had a, like a real big lag because we had, um. Like an extra lag for, like color went down. And so you said normally there's a lag of five days. Um, what is your sense of what is that including? Like, cause last week people were waiting five days to get their color tests when I was hearing that normally. People were getting color tests in like, within a day to two days. And so I just wanted to differentiate this data that we're seeing. Um, based on that. You know, the, the. The slowdown that we saw last week and the disruption to testing.
Sure, um, if you, can you go back to slide four, please, this line off? And I'll show you Commissioner Collins where it will be updated because, um, of the delays and the potential underestimate.
I don't see page numbers, so can you tell me when to stop?
Sorry, it's like, it's the fourth slide, so keep going, keep going up, right here, go back. One, next one, next one. Thank you. Um, sure, so as you can see, the California Department of Public Health is experiencing. You know, for many of the reasons you just mentioned, Commissioner, in addition to the reasons you mentioned. Commissioner Collins of the lag time of the reporting of tests and just people. You know, even hospitals and doctor's office being able to report positive, um, tests. So what happens is the, the new cases, you can see that the January sixth is pretty reliable, so I think at that. The city would feel pretty confident that it includes, um, it's pretty up to date on the testing. But on the seventh, eighth, and ninth, some of that will probably be increased, changed upwards. Based on tests coming in, and when tests are released. They generally will say the date that they, that the test was, the swab was taken, which then, um, would cause these numbers to shift.
So it's not when they were reported, but when they were taken, and so retroactively, we'll see those updates, but we won't see like. On the ninth, like a huge influx that reflects the ones before.
Right, so this is where the, this, and this is on the, um, I was gonna say the district's, the city's dashboard. So you can check it daily and it does get adjusted for exactly that, and. Exactly when a test is reported, it's not when you get the results, it's when the result was actually, the, um, swab was taken, to name.
And then a follow-up question is just, do we have any data on processing time? For, you know, these reasons where, like I said, I've. Staff were telling me that normally they got the results within two hours last fall, you even said that, but then this past week. Results were taken five days. Do we have any data on the? Processing, like average processing times for, for the color labs?
Yeah, we do, it's starting to inch down, which is good. We had, um, sixteen thousand tests submitted to color. In the first two weeks of school, which was probably three hundred percent increase. So, um, we are working with them and also with SFDPH kinda. We've got people who are testing daily, and so we're really trying to focus on their. I mean, people don't need to test daily, but we are trying to focus on the most recent test. Because that is the test result that people will be most interested in. So we're trying to sort of catch up with the big, the big testing push, and then. Higher, um, color continues to try to get more people into the laboratories, you know, to test, to process tests more quickly. And this is both on the city side and our side.
Okay, and I know you can't provide this, but can you share with us the data for, I'd like to see the data on processing times?
Oh, sure.
For, for city testing and then for the district, um, color testing, just if we can get reports on that, that would be helpful.
Sure, we can put it in the weekly report to the board. I don't know that I can get the city information, but I certainly can provide information for us.
Thank you.
Michelle Alexander?
Um, thank you. Uh, I just had a clarifying question around the, um, test kit distribution. I know there was a heroic effort this past week to get those out to schools and. Um, a lot of folks, uh, worked extra hours and volunteered to make it happen. Um, there was, I had heard, I just wa- wanted to clarify, cause I had heard that at, at least at some schools. They only receives enough test kits for, um, classroom teachers, but not other staff. So I just wanted to clarify what actually happened and is, and what's the plan there?
Yes, so the, um, when, so the initial tests we received were just for students, the ones from the state. Were just for students. Uh, the business community, uh, came together and made a donation of approximately four thousand test kits. So that allowed us to get, to do some to the community, which we did at the last Safer Together, uh, event. And then we had enough test kits for classroom teachers. So every classroom instructor, since they're with students, um, most, uh. Impacted by students or with students, uh, every classroom teacher got one. We're working with the business community for a second, um, donation. Uh, to be able to move, uh, forward or move out to staff. So that is our, this is what we're calling the first wave. The first wave went to classroom teachers, and we're expecting additional waves, so then we can hit paraprofessionals. Uh, site staff, and then begin to move out.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, student delegate Lamb?
Um, I'll throw it to Commissioner Collins, cause I think she has a follow-up on this one.
Thanks, yeah, um, similarly, I heard not all, um, schools received their. Um, allotment of the California Department, um, rapid tests. I heard that from multiple sites, and so I wanted to know how you're tracking that and, um.
Sure, Commissioner, happy to answer that question. We are aware of the discrepancies across sites, and our main objective. Um, over the past two weeks was to make sure that at least every site received an initial shipment. Based on the best available data we had at the time. And so that is a combination of, um, student enrollment data, um, snapshot from at the beginning of the year. As well as information that we have kind of gleaned through in-person learning and other efforts around staff counts by site. We have, um. Created since then, cause we did receive, um, many reports from school sites. We were also concerned that frankly, there were just discrepancies in the approach to packing up the boxes. We had a lot of folks working out there, sometimes there, I think there were misunderstandings about whether students were to receive each a test kit or a test. Each test kit had two tests in it. And so there were, there's confusion, I think, on the school site side, there's confusion on the folks who are packing. About what, um, they were packing and how many to, to deliver, so we did notice particularly at the beginning of the week. That the boxes that were distributed. There was uneven quality control. We corrected midway to make sure that there were additional sets of eyes. On boxes as they went out, but still the data we're working from is, um, imperfect. So we also created a self-reporting Google form to distribute through, uh, lead to principals. To also allow them to request not to correct, uh, if there are the test kits were misaligned. Um, and also mask counts, cause we heard feedback on both. Um, we've been collecting that information through the end of last week. Um, we're putting it together to compare to what we originally thought we were distributing. And the good news is, thanks to the donations we've received, as well as additional orders we've put in, um, for both supplies. Um, we feel like we will be able to redistribute to school sites to align with principals' self-reported counts of what are needed at each site. So that is our priority for this week, is to go back and, you know, make fixes and track the difference between what we expected that site would need. And what they are self-reporting. There was also confusion about, for example, masks, whether or not principals were directly distributing only to instructional staff. Or whether they were also supposed to include, for example, cafeteria workers and custodial, um, staff. Um, the, the instruction for the record was to distribute masks to everyone, um, who works at your site. Uh, so we are working on both of those things, self-correcting and tracking the discrepancy. Um, and again, I think we're also continuing to move forward on hiring more staff so that we can create our own. You know, permanent workforce to, to, um, smooth out our distribution over the next few months.
Is it possible to have that report, the, the reports that you have of? School allotments, the amounts of stuff that they, you know, per student? So that we can see. How your data shows and, and what the need is and what we feel, can that be posted for the public so people can see those num, you know, your tracking of that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Everybody gets what they were promised last week.
Yep, I've certainly, um, asked my staff to track the difference between our initial guess of what was needed at the site and what's coming back. Um, via the, the Google forms and feedback from sites, so happy to share that. I think it's unlikely that we'd be able to share it before next week, um, just because people are still sending in. Um, you know, requests and their corrections.
Thank you.
Student delegate Lamb?
Thank you. Um, I just had to tack on to President Lopez's request about data. Um, I know that she requested pre-pandemic data about, um, subrequests, but I'm wondering if we can even just go back like. Like a month before Omicron, just so that we could see the difference between, um. Pandemic sort of requests, but then also with the surge of Omicron, how much that changed, that's really, yeah.
Thank you. And student delegate Liang?
Yeah, I just had a clarifying question on the SFUSD testing offerings. So under the color PCR testing, it says that weekly courier pickup at each school, and then there's a bullet point that says, starting January eighteenth. Daily pickup, mobile testing at designated sites each day. Um, what, does that mean that, like? If I were to drop off a color testing kit, it would get picked up the same day, or is it just like, like, how does that work?
Sure, thank you for the question. Um, so there is a daily, the daily pickup started at school sites this week. We used to only have a weekly pickup. Um, each school has a designate, had a designated day. Now there will be a day, a pickup every day, Monday through Friday. And so if you are at a school and you wanted to test on any day, Monday through Friday, there would be a pickup. We're still, um, trying to get a sense of the courier routes, because it, you know, it's not. Each school needs to know like, by three o'clock each day or ten o'clock each day, there, it's usually a window. Um, so that's what that meant. There are also mobiles, um, testing sites at about eight locations each week. They rotate through thirty locations, so you could also drop a test off at those sites as well. And then we have, I think, six central office locations that pick up Monday through Friday as well. So there's quite a few places to drop test kits off every day.
Okay, um, I think there's just like a little miscommunication, cause I know I did go back into school today and I was asking about the, the color. Um, test kits, and, um, I think that people. Um, I think that they've started to tell students that it is only like a weekly pickup thing, and it's only on Tuesdays. From eight AM to noon admission, so I don't know if there is like a miscommunication there or like.
I, I think what happens is, we're a big system, and when information gets pushed out, and this was all pushed out last week. Maybe the school site hasn't caught up with the communication yet and doesn't have, so we. We're, we're also sending that out again this week, so I think, I think what you're experiencing is the challenges of communication is oftentimes there are lag. Even if we send the information out, there's a bit of a lag time between when it gets to school sites. And sometimes we're challenged with, well, then do we just put a pause and have it not happen? Until everybody knows about it, and so you're kind of experiencing us being in between two systems. But we are, um, oh, go ahead, Dr. Matthews.
I was just gonna say this, so that's how, um, um, commission, commission, student commissioner Liang, that's how it's been since, since of the spring. Last spring for admission, so that's what they're used to, and today is the first day of the daily pickups. So this is just starting, so as we go forward, before a year, it's been, as you just described, the week, the Tuesday pickup. Today's the first day, and the rest of this week, it'll be every day, so then they'll begin to, begin to, but this is a, you know, a, a, a huge shift. And today's the first day of that shift.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues, for your clarifying questions. Um, we'll come back to discussion, there's additional, um, dialogue, but, uh, let's go to public comment at this time.
If you'd like to speak on this item, would you please raise your hand, and can I have that translated, please?
Buenas, buenas tardes. Por favor, levante su mano si desea añadir un comentario público. Gracias. If you want to express your opinion about what I just said, please raise your hand. Thank you.
How long are we gonna give them, Commissioner?
Let's give ninety seconds per speaker, please.
Um, Jennifer?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, hi, first I'm calling with a question, I recognize commissioners cannot answer these. But the SFDPH, uh, board for schools is no longer showing information about outbreaks. I'd like to know when that information will be available or why SFDPH is making it unavailable at this time. Second, um, my school had record attendance for twenty twenty-two today at forty-nine percent. I'm at a small elementary school in the mission, we had twenty-nine percent attendance on Friday. Children are not getting an education at all. We need to make a better plan. And I strongly urge the district to make sure they are providing resources for children whose families have looked at your failure. To provide the resources we need to be safe and have decided they are not. to provide the resources we need to be safe, and have decided they are not going to risk their children on this. They are making the best choices for their families based on their circumstances, and it's time to listen to the families who are opting out rather than the families who are demanding more. Thank you.
Alita?
Hi, everyone. Um, so first of all, thank you for all the really hard work that's happening right now to scramble, to keep our students safe, to get as many of them back into schools as possible. Um, so, uh, as you know, I'm the advocacy chair for the Community Advisory Committee for Special Education. Some of these questions are mine, some of them are the CAC's. Um, question one is, will more test kits be sent home? Many families have already used both kits. Um, us here in my house, uh, we were identified as a close contact on Friday, so that second test that we were saving, um, we had to use before we sent kids back today. Um, I have access to kits luckily through my community hub, but, um, I know I'm not the only family in this situation. Secondly, um, we have many adults in our communities who are visually impaired, so therefore these, these rapid test kits are nearly impossible for those parents to read on behalf of their children. Are we providing any resources for them to get assistance in reading home kits if parents with visual impairments are unable to do so? Um, and then, uh, slide fifteen, could we see the data disaggregated by all focal populations? Um, of course, the CAC is interested in seeing, um, what attendance rate looks like for students with IEPs and five oh four plans. Um, uh, slide eighteen, uh, a follow-up clarifying question. When students with IEPs are out for any reason, corn, sick, whatever, um, is independent study being modified, accommodated, are supports being offered so that students' IEPs are met? Um, also, will compensatory ed be provided for missed minutes? Um, how are we making up services that miss when kids aren't able to come to school due to no fault of their own? We're finding that families have to keep kids at home. Their support staff, who are the only folks who are trained to support them, aren't there in schools, so thank you.
Carla?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is Carla, and thank you, everyone. Uh, it has been, um, a difficult couple of weeks, but, um, seeing my student's smiling face during the day makes it all worth it. Um, I wanted to reiterate what, uh, student delegate, um, Liang had mentioned about the daily pickups for the color PCR testing. Um, you're exactly right that not all school sites are getting the information at the same time. I think what would be very helpful is if we had a poster that posted the pickup time, um, and, uh, for that school site, a daily pickup time, uh, that we can post next to the Dropbox, and also in different languages, and then also the several other locations other than that, uh, Dropbox. So say a student at three o'clock pickup, the parent wants to test, they can take the colored kit, and then they can go to an off-site, one of the other offsites that's open till four thirty, if that pickup time has passed. Um, also, the rapid tests and the color tests are in English, and the rapid tests are in English and Spanish only. So our families who speak different languages are not necessarily able to access all the instructions. I, um, want to reiterate what Alita said about our visually impaired families and students. They need, um, more support in the area of, for testing, um, and also, um, any, uh, any more information. Dr. Matthews, thank you for your webinar. If you could also pass that, send an email out, back out to staff with the link to the webinar. A lot of our staff were very overwhelmed or out sick on Friday and are trying to find it on YouTube, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Supriya?
Hi, this is Supriya Ray calling in. Thank you for taking my call. I want to just take a moment to thank everybody for their work and their perseverance and trying to keep things going as best we can. What I wanted to talk about today was raising outdoor learning again. Outdoor learning is good for everybody. There were a couple of people on the call, uh, on calls last week who called for it specifically, including a teacher, as I recall. This is something everyone can do immediately, that would make, frankly, almost everybody feel better, feel safer, and benefit their mental and emotional health. So I would really encourage schools to get their kids outside and encourage teachers to do so. This is something that, like, I want to note as well, has been called for in resolutions, including Commissioner Collins' resolution previously for eating and learning outside, and still, as far as I know, the district has no plan for doing this. I'm also, I also want to speak more broadly about the district work group that is supposed to be put together, including stakeholders such as parents like myself. I have not heard anything from the district, other than one email over break telling me, you know, inviting me to be on that work group. I remember it being stated previously that the district was, did not start discussions in November, December, because they didn't consider that to be a good time. And I want to ask, when is a good time? They said that they would be starting discussions in January, and they thought that would be a good time to do it. But now, of course, there's a surge, and I'm sure people are busy again. The district had the opportunity to talk about this and to start conversations about this and didn't take it. When they said do it already, now they're not ready for a different reason, I presume. It's gotta be made a priority. Thank you.
Tom?
Hi, yes, I'm a teacher in the district, and I did not get one of the classroom teacher, uh, kits. My principal came and said, I'm sorry, I'm an RSP teacher. It's only for classroom teachers. But I think it should be for any member of the school staff who works there. We all work with students. So it's mainly for, for them, because, you know, the absences. I'm sorry, but like, paras work with kids, the custodians work with kids, right? We're coming in contact. Everyone's worried, but it kind of made it feel wrong, like, these people are more important to save or to test than others. And I just think it's, like, special ed, we always have to do that. As the teachers and paras, we always get the short end of the stick. So I think we just need to acknowledge that and kind of say, yep, we messed up on how we handed it out, and my principal felt really bad, but it was kind of like, we're fighting amongst ourselves at the site to try to say who is more important to get this test or not. I do want to thank, like, I think the daily testing is really great. I do agree with one of the callers who said, like, having a posted sign so families know, like, it's gonna be fixed at this time, the results take this many days. The more information, the better, right? And I think that's what's really cool about Dr. Matthews, about having those, you know, briefings. That stuff is really cool. Keep that up. But please just acknowledge that it kind of was messed up that only classroom teachers got it and not all school staff. If that was only what you were gonna do, then just acknowledge, hey, this is what we have right now, but it felt wrong. Thank you.
H. Kelly?
Hi, this is Hava, actually. Um, so I have a, yeah, so I just wanted to piggyback on that as well. I was trying to look for clarification uh, when Dr. Matthews asked classroom teachers, did that include RSPs and speech? Um, I don't know if I got my answer, if that was only at one school. But I wanted to, um, kind of piggyback on what Alita was saying and ask for data on how many, um, teachers within the sped department were out, and, um, how many substitutes were able to fill. And when I say teachers, I mean everybody on the sped team, and that includes RSPs, speech therapists, occupational therapists, et cetera. Um, if you could break down that data, I'd be grateful, because of what I'm trying to figure out is, were services disrupted, um, for my, you know, not just for my son, but for, for everybody, and to see what it was like on the ground. I'm, I've heard what it was like on the ground for um, general ed, but not so much on special education and what it was like, or what it is like right now. Um, so I'd like to know that. But also, um, when you're talking about masks, I haven't talked about this for a while. There are students who are hearing impaired as well as have speech issues. Um, we're talking about bringing in better masks, but there's no talk about clear masks at all. And it, it's an impediment, and I'm wondering if that could be a part of the dialogue. I had other questions, but I'll stop. Thank you so much.
Mindy? I'm gonna promote her, otherwise she can't speak. Mindy, are you there?
Mindy, you have to unmute, please. Mindy?
Okay, yeah, I want to know, uh, how can I, um, to, um, to, for me to make sure my son, uh, when he go to class, he will not, uh, will not able to get the virus in the class, inside a, a, a room? Because right now, um, a lot of cars are going to the park, happen, have, happened in the park. I saw several cars go there. But, um, if he in the classroom, um, besides open the windows, what else, uh, uh, you guys can do for my son?
Thank you for your comment.
Um, Sam? Sam?
Yes?
You can speak.
Okay, so, thank you for the district and, uh, Bob. My, my daughter now is, uh, on, is in the OLP and ODLP program. And, I mean, OLP program. So, but my friend asked me if she can apply for OLP or ODLP also. Um, one more question is that if we can get, uh, the test kit of, at home, would the district will send us the test kit? And some of our friends do not speak English or Spanish, they speak Chinese. So would you please, uh, provide some Chinese instruction for the test kit, how to use it? And then, and I also appreciate that if you can reopen the, uh, online learning program, so for more students can apply for that during the pandemic. Uh, thank you so much for all your effort to keep, uh, teachers and students safe. Thank you so much.
Chris?
Hi, um, I just wanted to express, I'm a special education teacher at Washington High School, and, uh, I wanted to echo what Tom, I think, said earlier. Uh, thankfully, I did get one of the rapid tests, but a lot of my colleagues did not, and those are people who were in classrooms pretty much every day that we came back from break, because they were either a para educator who is always in a classroom and always in really close contact with students, um, or because they were one of our awesome school counselors who helped to try to solve the sub problems and the lack of subs by taking time from their workday to cover for teachers in the classrooms. And people who were paras or counselors didn't even get considered with the rapid tests, and that just, it felt gross. It felt like you, we, it felt like we weren't all valued for what we did. And that's, that's what they're coming to me saying. And I'm hearing from others that they're saying, I didn't even feel human, because I didn't feel like someone cared about whether or not I got this, you know? So I just, eh, I'm not saying don't send them out, but I am saying communicate better about who's getting them and why and when, um, other people will get them, so that they feel seen and heard. This is a really scary time for our students and for our staff. Um, I'm also confused about the fact that the take-home tests for students had, uh, an expiration date on them in February. Um, and it just said February of twenty twenty-two, and there may be students who are holding on to them for, in case they show symptoms, and if they show them after February, you know. Anyway, thank you.
Deborah, can you make sure that, um, former speakers are muted? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Selena?
Hello, hi. Um, I want to thank you, um, for actually having this, uh, meeting. Um, I love the transparency, uh, to keep the parents in touch, because there are so many questions, um, that, uh, that's been asked last week and this week, so this came right on time. Um, I do have a question, uh, regarding, uh, regarding, uh, what's happening, uh, uh, right now in the school, uh, for the rapid tests for, uh, the students. Uh, some students were identified as close contact, and I think the schools are currently just asking, uh, the stu-, uh, the students whether they have symptoms. However, with this, uh, new, um, uh, strain that we have, it seems to be very mild. Um, uh, some people are tested positive, but they don't have any symptoms. So, um, you know, without, uh, without being given the rapid testing on, uh, it, you know, onsite in school, they were released back to, uh, classroom without, uh, you know, without just asking some questions, and they were released back. Uh, I'm just wondering if the school district is considering, um, providing, you know, this, uh, rapid test for, uh, students that were identified as close contact. Thank you.
Sarah? Sarah?
Hi, I just wanted to echo, uh, some of the former speakers that, I hope that some of the communication kinks can get worked out. Um, I know a lot of, you know, parents and teachers from our site are just kind of confused about the testing and, and how it exactly works, and I think it would go a long way to kind of assuage people's fears. Um, I also want to, you know, reiterate what the, the former teachers were saying in terms of testing being available to, you know, to all teachers, all staff members. Um, and I'm hoping that the district can do some kind of outreach to identify which staff members have received tests and which staff members still need them, so that we can kind of remedy that as quickly as I, as we can. Thank you.
Um, A, B?
Yeah, I think that's me. I just want to say that from where I can see as a parent, although there are a lot of parents who want their kids back in school, there's also a lot of parents that want to keep their kids home. And the procedures for keeping kids home isn't an easy one. It's been full of hurdles. So I want to speak in favor of having an easy-to-access hybrid models, uh, so that parents can choose what they want. And if this is made available, it would free up resources for those people that want to send their kids to school. And it might be nice even if there were an asynchronous model. That way, one teacher can serve a lot of students. I know it's not the best option, but it's better than nothing. And we seem to be operating on an all-or-nothing model. Thank you.
Yvette?
Hi. Yes, hi, my name is Yvette. I'm calling from, um, my home. I'm a, a board member on the San Francisco Parent Coalition, and I, I want to thank you all for this really wonderful presentation tonight. I also want to acknowledge and recognize the common thread that seems to be coming up and has been coming up since the very beginning of this situation and this pandemic, and that is communication. Zero families and educators feel like they are getting what they need regards to communication about what is safe, when it's safe, how it's safe. I, including students, obviously, given what our amazing student advisory council have mentioned as well. It's great that posters are going up and they're talking about things, but at the end of the day, we need to have better communication coming from the district. We need less infighting, wha- whatever is going on between the district and the Board of Ed. We need to make sure that every family and educator has a clear understanding of what is happening every time there's either a surge, because it's going to keep happening, and every time there is a situation here. Clear masks exist. I know that because I was packing them in a warehouse. So when I hear somebody from the CAC or from any school talking about how they don't have access to clear masks, why? They exist, they are there. We are not communicating well. We need to come together as a community. I appreciate everyone is doing, but please make sure that more communication is coming out, and that includes communication around expired tests. There's no reason for people not to understand whether or not they are good, whether or not they are okay, and what it means for their family. Please communicate better even with yourselves. Thank you.
Josephine?
Yes, hi, um, I just received some texting from some of our parents saying that they would love to get more information on how to get qualified for the fifteen days of online school. Um, I think, uh, the hybrid model is a good idea, so that, um, the teachers that are at home can, can be asked up on the online school and then, uh, alleviate some of the, uh, pressure of the, uh, distracted school. And I really appreciate all the teachers and staff, uh, pulling this together and, uh, making up for this trick one. And there's a lot of personal sacrifice. I really appreciate you all. And I've also made a bilingual instruction for, um, uh, using the test kit, uh, but would love to share it with you so that you can, um, send it out to families. Um, I appreciate everything that you do, and, um, that's it. Thank you.
Uh, Nikki? Nikki? Okay, it looks like they love it. Nikki?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah. Are you here? Okay, uh, I think the school should, uh, require that all students should wear a high-
Okay, uh, I think the school should, uh, require that all students should wear a high-quality mask, not just, uh, doing tests. And I think we can do best and protect our family, my, uh, student and teacher. Thank you.
I think that's it, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone that provided public comment tonight and absolutely agree. Um, I, as information is, um, changing rapidly and how important it is to get it to all of our, um, not only school-side students and families, um, but to our greater school community. So thank you again. Uh, with that, I want to turn it back to, over to my colleagues for discussion. I see, uh, Commissioner Bogus, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I, I think first I would, I, I'm just curious if we could, if the superintendent could, could respond to why we accepted the test with the limitations of, of teachers only? And if there's anything that we plan to do to kind of address kind of like the, the moral gap of like equality that it kind of feels like that, that that shows, understanding that that was a term that was put to us from someone giving us something that we desperately needed at that time? Um, but just to, to see if you could address that, please?
Yes, it's, as you just said, this was someone giving us something at a time when the entire mute community is scrambling to get tests. So the number of tests we got were, and as the, the business community came together, they, they have committed and said this was a first wave. They're going to try to get more. This is the, the absolute maximum number that they could get. We couldn't find them anywhere. You couldn't get them on Amazon, you couldn't get them on Walmart. You could not get them anywhere. But they were able to get this number actually from a, uh, uh, supplier that it, that's just, actually just started manufacturing them. But they were FDA, F, FDA-approved. So, uh, this is the, the number that were available. Um, I've, I've, as you just said, this, and this was at a time, this was two weekends ago when you, you couldn't find them anywhere. So, you know, when I hear, well, I won't go into some of the comments. But I, at that point, I, I can imagine the comments right now. If I had said, no, we're not going to accept them unless you can give me 10,000. So I, I accepted the number and I knew the number that came forward. The, the people who were most around students at this time are our instructional staff, our classroom teachers. So it, it was, as you just said, it wasn't to make one group, uh, feel more privileged than another or one group, as some people said, you know, just to save this group. It was much more of getting the test than nobody could get into the hands of teachers. And we had a commitment and still have a commitment that this is the first way and that they will do everything they can to get us more. I do want to also add for those, well, I'll stop there.
I appreciate the, the clarification. I mean, I think for me, prioritizing a job class versus kind of like people who are more at risk just, just feels, feels troubling to me and understanding that that's not necessarily the way that we would have done it in a perfect scenario. I mean, we were maximizing kind of the options we had, um, to keep students, um, and our staff safe. So I mean, definitely appreciate the person who donated the test, uh, and appreciate you for accepting them. But I think also, um, just trying to figure out how we wrestle with these things and be better prepared in the future to, to figure out how to be equitable to all of our staff of varying pay rates. Um, a di- a, a, a separate question I had was, um, I guess maybe to a request to, to board leadership. If in the future, you could request that staff ensure that all presentations are broken down with race and ethnicity, just looking at the attendance data and just kind of seeing the snapshots? And was wondering if, we don't have a chart probably available, but could we actually give out the attendance data by ethnic group? Uh, just so that people in the audience who are active can write it down?
Yeah. Um, actually, I do have the data broken up, not only by, uh, by every single twenty-two ethnic groups, by all grades and by every program. I'll be happy to put up the whole breakdown for first week as well as second week on our website.
Okay, I would love to have it, if it's not already shared now, to be shared the next board meeting.
I can share it right now. Do you have any specific group that you are interested in? Or can you share it all too?
No, no, I, I have some listed. So and if other people have other ones, then maybe you go, I would like to hear African-American again, American, Indian, Asian, Latino, Pacific Islander, Filipino, white, um, two or more race, um, and not reported.
Sure, so American Indian is seventy-seven point one percent. Um, then the next group you mentioned was Latinos is seventy-four point nine percent. Special ed is seventy-seven point nine percent. Uh, foster is seventy-one point one percent. Um, you said some other Asian, what was the other group you mentioned?
I just said Asian as a whole, but I don't know if you have it broken up into specific communities.
Yes.
Okay.
I have Asian as a whole, so Asian as a whole is eighty-seven point nine percent. Is there any specific Asian group you're looking at? Like Laotian, Cambodian, Mong?
I really want all of them, but I think I can wait. Could you give me Filipino and, and white students as well as mixed-race students?
Yes, white, I can give you eighty-five point four percent.
And just as a follow-up, Commissioner Bogus, um, again, Rita, we can have that, um, available, posted to the public. That'd be great. I don't know if it's a modification to, um, the slide deck, but I'll, I'll check in with general counsel for appropriate way of posting that information.
Yeah, it's a huge sheet, so I could do it for week one as well as week two because by tomorrow morning I also have week two. And I can post both on our website, the RPA website.
Dr. Matthews, did you have a comment? I see that.
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, uh, Chief Bajure, uh, has the, the information requested earlier.
Commissioner Bogus, I'm sorry, did I, to interrupt, but I wanted to make sure that we also had the visualization up for the public as well. Okay. Um, Rita, I'm also intrigued by, um, the, um, since we're on the thread of disaggregated data for the attendance, um, for English language learners, um, as well as what was raised by our sped CAC. Um, if we can also break that down by our students in, in special education and with I, IEPs and 504s.
Right, English learners was eighty point seven, but I'll put it all on the website, so that is.
Thank you. My audio is less, uh, strong these days.
No problem.
Thank you.
Can I continue with my question?
Yes, please do.
Right, thank you. Um, I get, just for clarity, I, I'm wondering just to, to see, when would a person have access to a mask at a school site on demand? And are we at a place where at any of our sites, that is true right now?
Was that true everywhere? Yes, the, the bat, the masks have been delivered to all sites. And, um, and they, the instructions were that each person, every, any person who needs, it's not just for, uh, teachers or certificated staff, the masks are for everyone. The KN95 masks are at every site. And so, uh, staff members, all they have to do or should have to do is go up to wherever the, that, wherever they're kept at the site to ask to request a mask. They're for all staff members.
Okay, I, I thought there was something about TK sites not having all of their masks yet, but maybe I misunderstood. So I do appreciate that, that.
That was, that was tests, uh, that was tests. And we have ordered tests, uh, for the, uh, TK sites.
Okay, and so was the same thing true as far as testing at this point? Like if you want to get tested at a school site, you have the ability to do that except for at the, the TK sites?
No, tests, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, um, Commissioner Bogus, so for the color self-swab kids, test kits, those are available at all our, all of our sites, excuse me. Um, what we were talking about was the one-time allocation for the rapid home test kits that we're handing to families. The California Department of Public Health's allocation did not include pre-K. So that's what we're working on getting back to those sites.
Okay, so the difference between the rapid test and the test that you would drop off at your site, which are available for everybody, but the rapid tests are still not fully available for the TK? Okay, I appreciate that clarity. Um, I was just wondering if we could talk a little bit about the impact of the sub shortages? I think we've shared the numbers some, but I just, I'm really curious to what this means for school sites and for school sites that are having, I guess, larger issues with that? What additional steps are being taken, I guess, to support those students and whatever happened in regards to lost learning time or things of that nature? And how, I guess, are we calculating that and communicating that back out with families?
So at this point, Commissioner, um, we really are relying on our teachers providing, uh, quality substitute plans for us to follow with the hope that if those lesson plans are available and resources are in the classroom, that whoever's facilitating instruction via the sub, they're always certificated people, that we can follow that and the students would, you know, be minimally impacted. But the reality of the situation is, of course, that because folks are leaving um, with such short notice and dealing with these unprecedented times, that sometimes the quality of the plans are not what we want it to be. Um, in response to that, our CNI team has been working to be able to provide resources so that a site could kind of make their own on-demand, uh, lesson plans that would, um, include gray level activities. Uh, and then many sites have emergency substitute plans they use as well. Um, there is no substitute for the, the classroom teacher with whom the students have a relationship, et cetera. Um, but we try our best to try to fill in those gaps where possible. Um, of course, we were not anticipating this surge as we all try to navigate and mitigate all the things that are unexpected with these times. But we are going to then have to come up with a plan to figure out what do we do to address, uh, any gaps in learning that are resulting from this as we were already trying to figure out and create plans for addressing gaps in learning from school closures in the previous year.
No, no, I, I appreciate that. I have one follow-up question, then maybe I will pause my litany of questions so other people can ask some. How are we communicating with families if a student has experienced a situation that has led to them having, uh, a long period without, um, you know, regular instruction or a regular substitute or something of that nature? Like, is, is there a way that a family would know that other than their student telling them? Because I think my concern is, maybe just so you could address it, is how, how do families know what's not happening and what is happening so that they can do what they need to make sure their student i- is, you know, getting access to whatever additional supports that they need?
Unfortunately, at this point, there's not a scaled answer that I can say every school does X. What I will say is that in addition to the students themselves telling their, their family members, uh, many sites do, uh, communicate with families via a letter or saying, you know, so-and-so is out. Um, and that is, you know, the prime means of communication. There is not yet, well, that would say would be a district-wide way to, to make sure that that's happening though and to make sure that information gets out to every family.
Thank you, Commissioner Bogus, um, President Lopez. And you also wanted to note that, um, there was an update on the, um, substitute response too.
Great, thank you for that. Why don't we start there before I ask my question?
Sure, so I, I just pulled data from, um, uh, I think it was student delegate Lamb had asked for data, like an example of a day pre-Omicron. So I pulled, we pulled the data for, um, September seventeenth of this year. So on September seventeenth, there were three hundred and thirty-two vacancies, eighty-six percent of which were covered by substitutes. And to your question earlier, President Lopez, you had asked about like pre, pre-pandemic times. What did it look like? Actually, very interesting, um, on, on, I pulled the data for January eighteenth, 2019. So today, three years ago, um, there were three hundred and fourteen absences and eighty-nine percent were covered. So there's a, there's a slight difference here and that I, I can, I can disaggregate for you further if you're interested. But these, like the three hundred and fourteen absences on January eighteenth, they're going to also include like professional development days and, you know, testing, you know, and when we call subs to do F and P testing, that kind of, those kinds of, um, of things, which were not, very little of that is happening right now. Um, so there's a, it's a little bit of a, it's not apples to apples exactly, but it, it just gives you a picture that running in the three hundreds is not on daily teacher absences is not uncommon for us. It's the coverage, it's the rate of substitutes picking up those, those absences, which is causing us a lot of struggle.
That's right. Um, and that's what I wanted to get more information about, just to have that comparison. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm surprised, I thought it'd be in like the two hundreds. Uh, so that is interesting that it was just as high, if not higher. Uh, thank you for, for pulling that. And my additional question is actually for Superintendent Matthews, just following up on the meeting we had with our student delegates about sharing information on our website by school site. Uh, and I don't know, I don't know if Chief Dodd had a chance to take a look at that. Uh, but it sounds like that, that piece across the district is, uh, trying to get the information for specific school sites for our families and our educators and our students. Uh, so if we can share it publicly on our website, um, the supplies that we have, where they're available at each school site, I'm hoping to do that. I just want to check in with Chief Dodd.
I would be happy to take that, actually, as the, uh, we oversee the website updates from the communication side of things. And I would say that the challenge is that we have to get accurate information. So we want to make sure that we don't post anything that, that conflicts with the reality on the ground. Uh, so as Chief Kamala Nathan expressed, we are in the process of trying to get a good, um, spreadsheet that we can then know is accurate and up to date. And we will be happy to post that for people to see. And we'll work out a way that people could see it by school site.
Yes, and that's based on the numbers that our school site principals are helping send over.
Correct, and this is related to the distribution of things like, um, masks and then accessibility of, of testing and, and basically questions like that, right? So related to PPE and the, and the supply chain around PPE?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we'll, we'll work on that.
Thank you. I have a couple of follow-up questions by C. Commissioner Bogus and Commissioner Collins. Commissioner Collins, since you haven't gone during this.
I can go after, um, Commissioner Bogus.
Okay, I appreciate it. I will, I will gladly ask more questions. I, I was wondering if, just kind of back to the, um, to the data, what percentage of our students, um, who have been missing are in an attendance area with a rate below eighty percent? Because I know you showed the map of the city in the slides and I just wanted to know if the lower numbers actually had a higher percentage of students? And then, and if there was any kind of correlation between those two or anything telling from that?
This was actually based on students. So the data that you're seeing in the different zip codes is based on students, not schools.
No, no, I understand that. But I mean, what percentage of our students come from the zip codes with the, the lower rates? If that makes sense? And I know you're saying that the zip codes represent what the students in those neighborhoods represent, um, as far as their attendance. But I guess I was wondering, knowing that a lot of our families or students or children live in the southeast of the city and there's lower numbers there, is, is there a disproportionate amount of students in places with the, the higher numbers? Or is it pretty even across kind of the zones in the city?
What I see is that there is much lower attendance rate in those schools as well. In the same schools which are in the southeast corner as well as in the Bayview, um, they have the lowest attendance rates as compared to all the other schools.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, just, my, my next question is about accommodating students for kind of a, a hybrid learning option. And I know it was kind of addressed in the, the comments to the Student Advisory Council. But I, I guess I just wanted to ask this question. It, for all the students who are, are absent right now, if they did all want to participate in online learning, do we have the capacity to absorb them, um, with our online learning program? Uh, and if not, what, what percentage of, of folks do we have additional space for in those current programs?
I need to follow up with you, uh, Commissioner Bogus, um, in terms of what percent? What I can say to you is that at this point, no, we do not have the, the capacity to, um, accept every student who applies. Assuming a high number of folks will want to apply at this time. You might recall, but it took us some time to even get the, um, on-demand learning program up and running because we had to find teachers, the staff, and make sure that every student in the program was able to see a certificated adult daily. Um, you asked another question. So that's, so that's that. I can get to the numbers in terms of what is our capacity at this point, but you had another question before that, I think.
I feel like that was the, the heart of it, just like how, how much we could accommodate families who are still interested in those options and just kind of looking at the, the gap that we have, like if this is a reasonable option to kind of get our attendance numbers back up kind of based on where we're at.
Yes, and so I would actually encourage folks to look into the short-term independent study option first. Um, just because we, we don't want you applying to the online, going back and forth. And it seems like a lot of families are having more short-term concerns. Um, and then if you find that you have a longer-term need. then if you find that you have a longer-term need, then go ahead and apply, and we'll admit folks as the capacity allows.
Did I lose Commissioner Bogus?
No, I'm just pausing my questions because I'm asking too many in a row. So I would definitely will let Commissioner Collins, if you want to ask your question, I'll most definitely make some space for it.
I don't, I'm fine to go after Commissioner Bogus or other commissioners have questions because I'm, I'm just, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Commissioner Lamb, do you want to go, or?
Yeah, maybe I'll just jump in here because it's related to the short-term independent studies as well as the longer-term options, as Deputy Superintendent Ford Mortel just spoke to. It's clear, maybe from the, you know, public comment and also what I've also been hearing from the community, that I understand absolutely the comms team has been, you know, getting their information out there, but it's still feeling like, you know, folks need to hear more about the how-to. So just wanting to ask, you know, what else, what's on the horizon to be able to speak to exactly, like, how do I enroll in the independent studies? You know, is that specific language? I know we always send information in multiple languages, but how do we ensure we can get that to our limited English proficient families?
I'm gonna let Gento jump in as well. But at this point, we do have information about how to apply for a short-term independent study on our website, as well as information about the ODLP and OLP. We have a, Gento, I'm gonna say it wrong, a FAB, we have a family communication that we can definitely continue to put information in about those different options. But I would say the first step for any family who's interested in finding out about any of our independent studies is to speak to their site leader or their classroom teacher. That's the most immediate way to get information, and that's where you're going to get the most in-depth information for your specific circumstance. But we will continue to update and try to make sure the families are able to access that information. But once, make sure everyone knows, go to your site leader or your site teacher, and you can get the information that you need there as well.
I would love to add to that. So thank you, Deputy Ford Mortel. I think we have intentionally, due to capacity issues, not broadly publicized online learning and on-demand learning in, since the fall. We're working closely with the instructional team to gauge what we can do to address the current demand. There's been a real uptick, obviously, since we've come back from winter break. So I think, to be honest, part of the absence of widespread centralized information about that is because we know we can't currently give everybody a way to enroll in that. What we can do, and I think what's under discussion that Deputy Ford Mortel was referencing, is to make sure that in individual circumstances, when there's a student or family member that expresses to the principal or to their teacher, extenuating reasons why they would be a good fit for that program, that then they have the instructions to do that. And for other families who are needing temporary accommodations with distance learning, there are, there are options also being shared with them through their principal and their teacher. And we continue to make sure that the general information is out there. But just to be, to be honest, you know, if we, if we are sending something that's sort of more broad than posting it on our website, we know that we would get, we would get a lot of demand at this moment in time. So we're discussing that and trying to figure out what the options are so we can meet families where they are.
Thank you. I have a follow-up to that. You know, I've been, not only did we hear about it in public comment, but also I've also been hearing from families around the disaggregated, you know, by school, if we're seeing extremely low student attendance. And maybe this is a question to Superintendent Matthews, you know, you know, what are some current remedies? And I know we're in the thick of, we're in the thick of the surge. It's probably going to be also a layered approach of kind of families, I'm making some assumptions, of families' comfort levels at various times. But is there something there that the team is looking at or considering? When you see such high levels of low student attendance, what are some of the strategies or outreach happening there? If we could talk more generally. Did I make sense with my question?
Well, I'll talk some, and then I'm going to ask Deputy Superintendent to talk. I know that our schools are reaching out. I know they're reaching out to families. I know they're providing support. I know that for a fact. I also know that, as you heard from one of the earlier, earlier part of the presentation in regards to the pandemic, that we are, you know, we've heard about the peak in, for example, some of the East Coast cities where they're now knowing that the numbers are going down. We expect that here in the next week, week and a half. And so I know a big, a big part of this is, as we've seen in the past, as the surge numbers have gone down, people begin to feel much more comfortable about returning. We still believe that in-person instruction is best for students. We will continue that belief. And, you know, like I said, a big part of what's happening is, I know from sites' perspective, that there is definitely some reach out, either from counselors or from classroom teachers, to encourage or to make sure that students are receiving as much as possible if they're not comfortable being onsite. Deputy Superintendent, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
The only, the only thing I would add is to reiterate what I said before, that we have been evaluating, or sorry, within the presentation, we've been evaluating the criteria for our short-term independent study to see if we could add criteria that will allow us to be more responsive to situations like, I don't feel comfortable coming to school for a couple of days. At this point, that's not outlined in our independent study criteria. And so we're considering that. And that would definitely address places where we have, you know, surges of absences for short periods of time.
Thank you.
Just kind of follow-up question on what you asked Vice President Lamb. And I am curious if families are directed to ask teachers about the program, what, how is this information getting the teachers, informing them enough and educating them enough to give the response to families?
To clarify, Commissioner Lopez, so the short-term independent study is not a new program or model. It's things that students and families have requested from teachers for forever. What's different is the criteria by which to get it. And we've put that in a number of our communications, and we continue to do so so that our educators know how to respond. But we also make sure that our principals are aware. And so if the teacher is not, you know, up to date with whatever changes, we try our best to make sure that our leaders are either in our Wednesday updates, our lead news, or the various ways that we get them information.
Okay, thank you. Because I know, with sharing information, there's an overload of information, and teachers are holding a lot. So I'm happy to hear that there's a way to back that up.
Do you just want to add, I'm sorry, President Lopez, that it is, it is on the website, too, for staff, because we recognize that there's a lot of information. And as you might be asked things, if you're a teacher or a site leader, we strive to keep that and work very closely with Deputy Superintendent Ford Mortel to keep that up to date so they can go there and get the information to share with families. And similarly, the Family Resource Link is another source of information for families to reach out if they are confused. And, you know, it is something that our site staff are sending families to, and that is a resource for families to get accurate information as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Okay, I'm ready. Unless there's any other specific questions, I think it's helpful sometimes when we get on a topic and then, you know, multiple commissioners can chime in and we can, instead of bouncing around, if there's any others, that's fine. Mine is more of a summary statement.
Okay, so I do have a couple of follow-up. I know that the, is it pre-KTK students did get their, the order has been placed. Do we know how long it's going to take? And is it ordered through the state? Or is it directly from the district?
We ordered it directly and used funds we had raised through the Spark COVID-19 Response Fund. And it is supposed to arrive sometime this week, but we don't have the exact date yet.
Too helpful. And I think that's all the questions I had. Go ahead, Commissioner Collins. I don't see any other hands.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, like, this fall, our district made a commitment to opening schools. And when we did that, we committed to keeping our schools safe. And as the first day approached, we saw Delta coming. Families reached out that were concerned. They were excited about school, but they were also worried. And they wanted to make sure that we were putting things in place to keep schools open and keep students safe. And if it isn't clear by Omicron, this pandemic is not going away. And learning to live with the pandemic requires us to put in safety measures and procedures that mitigate the ups and downs of these surges. In August, President Lopez and I introduced a resolution, and the resolution requested that staff put together plans so that we could stop doing a whack-a-mole approach and get ahead of surges like this. I've heard some calls in public comment. I want to say thank you to the community for your feedback and your input. And there's obviously a concern around communication. And I know that that's difficult when things change rapidly. But I don't think that's necessarily the first area that we need to improve, because I'm thinking that we can't communicate a plan that we don't have. And I have yet to see a plan in any of these areas that families are requesting information. I haven't seen a plan for outdoor learning. I haven't seen a plan for how we're going to support increased lunches. I haven't seen plans on how we're going to improve weekly testing, or how we're going to make sure that teachers get on-demand testing when they need to go to work. I haven't seen any plans on how we're going to distribute high-quality masks. And I haven't seen any plans on how we're going to make sure that students know how to manage quarantine and handle credits. I haven't seen, I think online learning is totally confusing to families. No one knows what the difference between ODLP and OLP is. No one knows, teachers right now are juggling whether they should continue to give work to students who are staying home, or whether they should be discounting their work. All of that is confusing to families. And it's obviously confusing to students because they put it in their report. So when I ask questions about why we didn't prepare for Omicron, I'm really frustrated when I hear, you know, we were, it was unexpected because I think in California, we had the first case in San Francisco of Omicron in the country. And then we watched it come from the East Coast all the way across the country. And we could learn from other districts. And yet, despite multiple requests from board members, we have still yet to see how other districts are doing what we can't seem to be able to do. We see Los Angeles, Berkeley, Alameda, San Diego, and Marin all implementing weekly testing and other measures that we are not able to do. And when it comes to attendance, I think, you know, it's really upsetting to hear the superintendent say that, you know, well, we're just kind of, you know, we're expecting Omicron to decrease when we know we're going to have another surge around the corner. And we also know that the primary reason, or I'm hearing, one of the primary reasons that families are keeping their kids home, or, and I know that one of the large reasons why substitutes are not picking up assignments is because we aren't implementing safety measures that would make them feel safe. So it's not my job to make a plan. It's not our job. That's staff's job. And I really wish that we could have a plan as a board that we could discuss. And I really wish that our public could see it, and they could see when they're getting masks, and then they could believe that it was going to happen when, when they were promised these things. And I think that it becomes even more frustrating when last week, staff and students are told, every student's going to get a test. And then we find out that at some schools, hundreds of tests weren't delivered. Or when staff are, you know, desperate for N95 masks, to the point that they are actually going online to ask who has them. And our district says we're sending them out, and then we only allocate them to teaching staff, and we disrespect paraeducators and, you know, RSPs and other folks who are just as critical and just as involved with serving our students. So I'm just, I'm tired of asking for a plan. We started with a resolution in August, and we still don't have any plans in any of these areas. And so what I'm going to start doing is working with President Lopez, our labor partners, and student leaders to design a dashboard so we can track progress. And I'm tired of hearing what we're going to do, and I'm just going to start sharing what is actually happening. I, and that is the communication that I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping we can get ahead of this. But, you know, I'm, I feel like these meetings are unproductive, because the purpose of us as a board is to ask questions and inform policy and inform direction. And instead, we find out about things after the fact. And sometimes we don't find out about them until we ask, as is the case with, you know, the deliveries, you know, to the schools. So I appreciate the work that's going on to remediate these errors. But I'm continuing to ask, how are we going to get ahead of this so that this doesn't continue to keep happening? And finally, I want to say, I really do appreciate families and really do appreciate the site staff for all the work that you're doing, despite all these ups and downs. And I believe that you deserve better, and you deserve to understand how our district is supporting you. And I will continue advocating for clear communication around what our plans are moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Before we close out for the evening, I did have, it did spark our discussion, some additional questions. And this is related to some of the state advocacy work that is happening at this, that is occurring, not only on the funding side. But I'm curious if staff has any updates on the increased resources, rapid tasks coming out of California Department of Public Health, as well if there can be any type of summary or outcomes from the Board of Supervisors Committee meeting last Friday that Supervisor Malgar called for around moving forward, what are the considerations, plans, particularly around testing, for both at that intersection between the city, the district, and the California Department of Public Health?
I'm sorry, Vice President Lamb, I wasn't, that was a lot. So I want to separate out because I think you asked about an update on the meeting that was on Friday, which I'll let Deputy Superintendent Mian Lee give that.
Yeah, and the overarching is that this, you know, the fact that Governor Newsom, you know, a couple of days before winter break announced that, you know, test kits were coming to school districts. So I'm curious to understand from the state advocacy side, because some of us, some school districts in the Bay Area have been meeting consistently with Dr. Senator Pan about what LEAs, Lead Educational Agencies, school districts really need on the ground, particularly not only what is occurring now with Omicron, but overall through the pandemic. So I'm curious to understand, has there been additional advocacy as now the state legislature is back, the governor's budget has been presented? What's in store for school districts like testing, like, you know, high-quality masks? And is that a one-time distribution from the state administration? I guess that's question number one. Question number two is then, how are the local municipalities, like San Francisco Department of Public Health, because of that meeting that was called last Friday, and I know the school district also presented, what were some of the outcomes there? So we can just share that with the public here.
Let me, I would like Deputy Superintendent Lee, because this is under his area.
Thanks, Dr. Matthews. So in, with respect to the state, Commissioner, Vice President Lamb, we know that Governor Newsom has announced a proposal, which I believe we're still awaiting to see the details about, of a $2.7 billion package of COVID-related relief. And that's not specifically only for school districts, but it's more broad-based. But it would include, as we understand it, support for testing and PPE. But that, that's still sort of pending. We don't really have all the details about what the portion would look like for a K-12 and and, and then within the K-12 portion, how that would be allocated to each, each school district or to each LEA. That, that is, he did announce that that was a supplemental. So as a short-term measure within the current budget year, which if that materializes, hopefully that would come forward in, in this spring versus next year. And then with respect to the Board of Supervisors hearing, frankly, Vice President Lamb, I, I also did not attend. And we got some reports from Viva Mogi, who did represent our district in that hearing. But I was, I did not hear specific assistance that was immediately, you know, tangibly provided through that, through that hearing. So I'll, I'm trying to see if I'm asking her that specific question. But we understood it was, it was more informational for, for the committee members.
So just as a follow-up comment, I think you've heard me voice this before, both in the Policy and Rules Committee, also in Budget and Business Services. But just to be named that now the governor, if it is a supplemental in mid-year supplemental, you know, how as a, one of the largest urban districts in the state, I would love for SF Unified, along with our colleagues, to really then continue to advocate and push for how critical it is for the, those resources, either they be tangible in PPE or the rapid tests or funding directly to come to LEAs. I think that is a really key distinction while again recognizing, you know, the educational recovery dollars that did come through California Department of Education. I just want to be really specific that these are public health dollars and need to be coming directly to LEAs and that value of that.
Yeah, understood, Vice President Lamb. So we'll, we'll try to follow up and find out more information and definitely we'll use that lens.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much. So colleagues, I don't see any additional hands. I really appreciate the staff presentation, all the work that's been happening for two years now, but particularly as we steer through the surge together. And thank you again to our public and for your comments and engagement. So all at, at this time, I'd like to formally adjourn our special meeting committee as a whole. Have a great evening. We'll see you soon.
Night.